Welcome and thank you for coming to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting on February 24th. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight's meeting as we do all meetings with announcements. I have just a few. I'd first like to start off with some good news. For those of you who have been paying attention to the newspapers, Dutchess County was host to the Special Olympics this past weekend, the Winter Olympics, and despite the fact that we didn't have much snow, we did have some of the activities, the competitions here in Dutchess County, and some were over in Sullivan County. I had the opportunity to attend the opening ceremonies and it was quite moving. The good news is that they'll be back next year and hopefully the weather will cooperate. Many thanks to groups who came out in support. There were nearly 1,900 people volunteering for the Special Olympics, you should know. We saw the Girl Scouts there. We saw actually a huge turnout from Bard Student Athletes who were there on opening night greeting the Special Olympians. Other announcements are, we just want to remind you, March 1st, that's this Tuesday, if you're watching at home, that's the following day, is the deadline to get in your exemption forms to the assessor's office, and that office will be open until 4 o'clock Tuesday, March 1st. We also want to advise you, as if you saw the last town board meeting, we are doing renovations to this facility here to make it ADA friendly, so we are redoing our bathrooms. The contractor we've met with, and that work is going to begin Friday, March 4th, in the afternoon, so if you happen to come in that day, you'll see a little more chaos in Town Hall than usual, and we hope to have the majority of the work completed by the time we reopen Town Hall Monday morning. We do expect to have a little work done a few weeks later as the special order doors come in as well. I also would like to advise you in announcements that we have some correspondence about April being Parkinson's Awareness Month and whether we as a community would like to sign on to support that. And we also have some correspondence related to Green Infrastructure Conference, which is Tuesday, March 29th. It is put on by Cornell University Cooperative Extension of Dutchess County, and that's from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Farm and Home Center in Millbrook, New York, which is Route 44. And the last thing that I have is, not good news, but it's something I feel we should do. In the last couple of months, we've lost a bunch of our neighbors, and I thought it might be an opportunity for us to acknowledge the family and friends of those individuals. Diana Close, Arnie Pezy, who was a fixer in Tivoli, Barbara Beilenberg, who helped save the Elmendorf Inn, Pat Mickich, did I say that right?
Right.
Tom Gardner, who has a local business here, Nancy Griffiths, who was married to Judge Griffiths for many years, Ginny Garofalo, Helen Saunders, and Jordan Tiberio. So our thoughts are with those families and the friends of those individuals. And that's all I have for announcements. Does anybody have anything else? Sarah?
Yeah, so we've spoken before about an upcoming Solarize campaign that's going on in five towns across Northern Dutchess, including Red Hook. Our program launched March 5th in Reinbeck Town Hall. You're all invited, and it's 12 to 2:00. It's in the middle of the day, and there'll be refreshments, you're going to meet solar installers and learn more about the program. There's a lot of discounts and information as part of the program, and basically the idea is to make it really simple and easy for you to decide whether it's the correct option for you. So we have a lot of information going out, press releases and things, and I think the best is probably to check our town website, and we'll maybe have a link to our program website, but the website is solarizind.org if you want to know more about that program. And we'll also have an event in Red Hook, March 17th, at the Elmendorf, at 6:00, and one in Tivoli on April 2nd. So stay tuned, there'll be more coming on that.
Bill, any announcements? Harry?
No.
Jim?
No, I don't.
Okay, Sue, is there anything? Okay, any reminders? All right. Thanks very much. We have next on the agenda, and it looks like we're sort of right on schedule, a public hearing. I'm wondering, we have public comment thereafter. Are most of the folks here for the public hearing? Do we have individuals who want to speak, make public comments not related to the public hearing? Any individuals, public comment? So why don't we do that first, then public comment, I'll open that, and then we'll open the public hearing, if that's okay with you all? Would anybody like to address us on another issue? Okay, very good. So we'll move then on to public hearing, and Sue, would you like to let us know about the notices related to the public hearing and whether they were filed?
Sure. Yes, they were. Both appeared on February 12th, one in the Poughkeepsie Journal and one in the Daily Freeman. I have affidavits from both newspapers here. It was also posted on the town web, sent to the two villages along with the public hearing notice and a copy of the local law. Went to Dutchess County Planning, it went to the Town and Planning Board, it was also sent to the village and town of Sorgades, to the town of Clermont, to the town of Mylan, the town of Reinbeck, and the town of Ulster. Public hearing notice and local law went to each one of those. So it reads like this. Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on February 24th, 2016, at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number C, proposed of 2016, entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 143," entitled "Zoning" of the Town Code of the Town of Red Hook. To amend the Town of Red Hook zoning law to replace an existing section entitled "Development Within the Hamlet District" with a new section entitled "Historic Structures and Districts." To protect regulated historic structures in the town, to modify the allowable uses in the town zoning district, to delete the definitions of hotels and inns, and to modify the definition requirements and permitted districts for lodging, to replace the definition of hunting or fishing clubs with separate definitions, and modify the requirements and permitted districts for hunting clubs and fishing clubs. To permit uses that will encourage adaptive reuse of Hudson River Estates to preserve the historic and natural character, to increase the required minimum lot area in the LD and I districts, and to increase the minimum open space requirement for conservation subdivision in the WC, the LD, the RD5, and the I districts. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated February 9th, 2016, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And actually, the local law and the map was also posted on the town website.
Thank you very much, Sue. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. It's now a little after 7:35. If you are not familiar with this proposal, if you did not have an opportunity to attend one of the two informational sessions this fall, or have a chance to read about the update to the zoning on either the website or here in person in Town Hall, we'd like to begin with just a very brief presentation by the town's planning firm, Green Plan. Michelle Gregg is here to give us sort of a brief review of what we're discussing tonight, and then we'll have a public comment.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to hint on some of the highlights of the proposed local law. As the supervisor mentioned, we did have two informational meetings this early in the fall, I guess it was, to talk about the historic preservation aspect of the local law. So I'll just briefly review that. There is a handout over here which gives a little bit more detail to what I'm going to be explaining, and of course, the local law itself is available online, has been for a number of weeks now. And I encourage you to read it to get more detail, because I have covered everything in a short time tonight. So the proposal is a local law that includes provisions to protect historic resources in the town, of which there are many significant examples. The most important one, of course, being the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, which is one of the largest and most prestigious historic landmark districts in the country. And despite its importance to the history of our nation, the resources in that district have little or no protection. I want to point out that the zoning amendments are text amendments only, there is no amendment to the zoning map. The amendments for historic preservation apply to two existing zoning districts, one of which is coincident with the National Historic Landmark District, which is shown in the brown hatching on this map. So the HLO, the Historic Landmark District, which is a zoning district, is exactly coincident with the National Historic Landmark District. So that is an existing zoning district that the historic preservation provisions would apply to. The second existing district that it would apply to are the Hamlet districts. There's the Hamlet of Barretown, the Hamlet of Annandale, it's very hard to see here because it's so small, but if you come up and take a closer look, you can see it's there, and also the Hamlet of Upper Red Hook. The provisions for historic preservation also apply to any property that is individually listed on the state or national registers of historic places. And those properties on this map are shown in purple. There are five properties that are outside, they're very hard to see unless you get up closer, that are located outside the HLO district. So that's what the provisions for historic preservation would apply to, two existing zoning districts, and then these individually listed properties. The Hamlet zoning district is already subject to the kinds of provisions that we are talking about, being presented in this local law. Currently, if you have property in the Hamlet zoning district and you propose new construction, alterations, or demolition, that requires review by the planning board and the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness. That review itself does not require site planning view or special permit, but it does require a certificate of appropriateness from the planning board. So what in essence is being proposed is that the requirements that are currently on the books for the Hamlet district be extended to apply to the HLO itself and to these individually listed properties. So any new construction, alterations, and demolitions would require a planning board review and issuance of a certificate of appropriateness. And that's explained in a lot more detail in the handout. The local law is also proposing to delete an existing section of the zoning law, which is in the Environmental Protection Overlay District. There is a section entitled "Historic and Scenic Resources," and that would be deleted from the local law, replaced with this. Other zoning amendments outside the issue of historic preservation proposed in the local law include changes in the uses to the underlying districts in the HLO. The HLO is an overlay district, and it overlays other districts such as the Limited Development District, the Hamlet District, the RD5 District, and so on. There are other underlying districts. So there are some proposals to changes in the uses in those districts, eliminating some of the more intense uses such as hospital and health care, and allowing some more compatible uses, uses that the board considers more compatible for that area of the community, such as a lodging facility, and either a new construction of a lodging facility or adaptive reuse of an existing structure. In terms of lodging, the local law proposes to replace existing categories of hotel/motel and inn with a new category just called lodging. So instead of having these separate categories of hotel/motel/inn, really, there's not a tremendous amount that differentiates them, they just have one single category now called lodging. The law proposes to eliminate lodging as a permitted use in the RD3 district. Originally, the RD3 district was a very large district that had many very large properties in it. In July 2011, the Town Board adopted a new zoning map, which included the Agricultural Business District. Many of the large RD properties went into that district. There are a number of conditions that have to be met to allow for a hotel/motel or inn in the RD3. For example, you have to have a minimum lot area of five acres. For a hotel/motel, it has to be accessed from a state highway with a minimum lot frontage of 300 feet. And for an inn, it can only be adaptive reuse and must be accessed from a state counter or through road. So there are really not a tremendous number of parcels in the RD3 district that would, under the current provisions, allow for a hotel/motel. So it's being proposed to eliminate that use from that primarily, is a primarily a residential district. I should note, however, that the RD3 would still be permitted to have a home occupation. A home occupation includes a B&amp;B. So a B&amp;B would still be allowed, under the provisions for home occupation, which is a small lodging facility, so to speak. We won't use that in the bill, we'll talk of it as a B&amp;B, which has a maximum of four rooms. Okay? So it's actually going to be separate, separate sort of category from a lodging. The local law also proposes to modify the density standard for a lodging facility in the B1 district. And here I need to note that there was an error, there was a courtesy letter that was sent out to all the property owners who could potentially be affected by the changes to lodging in the RD3 and in the B1 district, and the letter said that there was a 16 guestroom cap in the B1 district that was being eliminated. That actually, there was consideration of actually including a six-bed guestroom cap in the B1 district in an earlier draft of this local law, and that is what was deleted, was the consideration to include a cap. The current zoning law itself does not have a cap on the number of guestrooms in the B1 district. The change is simply that currently in the B1 district, you must have a minimum lot area of two acres for the first 16 guestrooms, and thereafter, you're required to have 5,000 square feet of lot area for any additional guestroom. And in order to simplify that, it's simply being stated that it must be, that you're permitted to have, sorry, eight guestrooms per acre, simply to simplify that. That does result in a very small reduction in permitted density in the B1 district, because if 5,000 square feet per guestroom would result in 8.7 guestrooms per acre rather than eight. So for any acreage above two acres, there's a very slight decrease in permitted density. Is that clear? Okay. The size of a lodging facility in the B1 district would still, of course, be limited by many other factors such as building height, and building coverage, and setbacks, and parking requirements. So there are many factors that come into play that limit the size of facilities other than just the density. The proposal also clarifies the language in the Ag Business District. Currently, the language for lodging in the Ag Business District states, "An inn shall be limited to 10 guestrooms, except in the AV District, an inn shall be limited to 16 guestrooms, as long as the inn has ingress to and egress from a state highway." That could be interpreted to mean that an inn is only permitted in the Ag Business District if the property has access from a state highway. That was not the original intent of the zoning when it was adopted in 2011. And so we have clarified this. So it now reads, "A lodging facility shall be limited to a maximum of 10 guestrooms in the AV District, unless access to the facility is provided from a state highway, in which case a lodging facility shall be limited to 16 guestrooms." So it clarifies that in the AV District, you're allowed to have a lodging facility, even if it's not on a state road. The second change to the AV District is currently, if you're permitted, currently in the Ag Business District, you're allowed to have a restaurant that's accessory to a farm market, but the restaurant requires a special permit. So the proposal now is to modify that, so that a restaurant that's accessory to a farm market does not require a special permit if it's fewer than 20 seats. If it's more than 20 seats, it would continue to require a special permit. There's been sort of a modification of that to make it a little easier for a smaller restaurant in a farm market without the need for a special permit. The proposal for the law also proposes to bring the zoning law into greater conformance with the town's comprehensive plan by modifying, reducing the residential building potential in the limited development and institutional districts from one dwelling unit per five acres to one unit per 10 acres. And that would make those districts consistent with the waterfront conservation district and with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And finally, for conservation subdivisions, which is a type of residential subdivision, the required open space would increase from 80 to 85% in the WC District, from 70 to 85% in the LD and RD5 districts, and from 50 to 85% in the I District. So all those districts would have the same minimum open space requirement of 85%. And again, I want to stress, that's just for residential conservation subdivision. So that's an overview of the highlights. There is a handout going around, and this map is available for you to look at as well if you'd like to look at the historic resources map.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle, and again, thank you all for coming and for participating at this time. If somebody would like to make some comments in the public hearing, all we ask is that you just state your name when you come up to the mic, and we're happy to hear you. Who would like to go? Yes, Claudine.
Thank you. I'm Claudine Close. I'm the president of Historic Red Hook, and I am very pleased to represent that organization and commend the work, the very impressive work, that so many town board members, so many officials, so many committee members, so many task force members have worked on for so long, and I think the product is excellent. As Michelle said, Red Hook is very fortunate to have a significant number of architectural and historic resources, especially in the National Landmark District, and they all contribute to this sense of place that we feel so strongly about. I think everyone who lives in Red Hook feels very strongly about the sense of place. And our organization, our mission is to preserve and protect and promote the history, and we believe that historic preservation is collaborative, and it's always a conversation about how to allow change that's inevitable, at the same time as preventing significant loss of historic and cultural resources. And we believe that the best way to do that is to set up a structure as represented by this law, where you have a design review committee with people who are sensitive to and have the knowledge of the architectural and historic resources. So we support it heartily, and Historic Red Hook will do whatever it can to help contribute to the town's efforts.
Okay, Claudine. Anyone else? Wendy?
I'm Wendy Aldrich, the Red Hook Town historian, Barretown. I would echo what Claudine just said. There's a tremendous accomplishment in the history of this town, in what the intermunicipal task force and all those who participated in this, particularly the wonderful work that Michelle has done over a period of too many years. But this is, I believe, a very rational and very defensible next step in the identification and protection of the most important resources in our community. And I'm tremendously proud, as a citizen of Red Hook, to see this progress being made. I believe that the provisions of this new law, this proposed law, will do much to further enhance the protection of our open space and environment, but particularly our cultural heritage, and the quality of life today and tomorrow for the people of Red Hook will be marvelously enhanced and secured. And finally, I would just say, as a property owner in the Barretown area, that these provisions, it might be argued, would encumber me and my family, and all I can say is, I embrace the provisions with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. It's nice to see you walking around again. I might have... Someone else like to make some comments? Mr. Hubbell?
I'm Pete Hubbell, from Upper Red Hook in the Hamlet Zone. I'm going to take somewhat of an alternative view.
Okay.
When this was initially proposed to the Ag Open Space Committee, it was four properties in the Town of Red Hook that they were going to be doing something to preserve the St. Margrethe's, and it seems to have grown into something more than that. So, living in the Hamlet Zone, in Upper Red Hook, we now have structures that may not be in that zone designated, but may be designated from time to time as a town board decides. So my house, while it may not be designated historical, could be designated historical at some point in the future, at which time I'm going to have to jump through four or five different hoops between various different boards here at the town before I can put a shutter up on my house. And then what's going to happen is, I'm going to have exterior architectural features that will have to be approved, such as, if I want to put a trim up, I've got to get, jump through a bunch of hoops. If I want to change a door, I've got to go through a bunch of hoops. If I want to change a window, I have to go through a bunch of hoops. If I want to change a front step, I have to go through a bunch of hoops. If I want to change an entry, I have to jump through a bunch of hoops. This borders on property rights, and in fact, it borders also on property values. And I think this is overreaching a part of this proposal, and I don't know whether the people in the Hamlet Zone are fully aware of this, whether they have been notified about this or aware of these changes. I think it needs to go back into the planning stage. I think every property owner in the Hamlet Zone, particularly in Upper Red Hook and Barretown, should be made aware of this and have a chance to weigh in on what their thoughts and feelings are on this thing, and this is way premature to accept anything like this at this point.
Mr. Hubbell, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Did you say you already live in the Hamlet?
Yes, I live in Upper Red Hook.
Okay. So you're aware that you're already subject to most of those reviews at this time?
Well, they're not as formalized, they're not as formalized as they are here. This is a law. I do not believe they're a law at this point.
No, it is a law, and this law extends the provisions to the Hamlet.
This is way more formalized than it's ever been before.
I'm just clarifying that you were making it sound like you might, at one time, be subject to it if your house was considered historical, but if you live in a Hamlet District, then you're already subject to these provisions. They may be stated in a little bit more detail in this law, I don't know, I don't have them side by side, but you know, the Hamlet Districts are already subject.
You better write me up, because I've done a lot of changes to my house and I don't want to see anybody.
Okay, I'll tell Steve Cole.
Michelle, did you want to respond to that?
It is true that the Hamlet Districts are currently, there are provisions for the Hamlet Districts already in this regard, for any new construction, alterations, and demolitions that's currently in the zoning law. And so... And so, as I said previously, essentially what's been proposed...
Well, that's alterations. If I put windows, you know, I mean, windows are not alterations.
Well, if it's imprisonment in kind, it's not...
Now it's windows. Now it's trim. If I want to change a trim, if I want to put a gutter up.
Right, no, it's, there are, there are a lot of exemptions, but it is already currently required. And I do want to say, this is actually scaled back a lot from what's currently on the books. What's currently on the books is that anything within 500 feet of an historic resource, anything, any development at all that occurs within 500 feet of an historic resource, if you're putting up a fence, anything that you're doing, requires site vet review from the planning board. Now, that's what's currently on the books, that's the section I mentioned that's being deleted in the EPO. Because that, there were, and there were many, many, many historic resources that were mapped. The map was never adopted, so the planning board has never been able to implement that section of the zoning law. But this is actually quite a step back from what's currently on the books in the town of Red Hook, okay? And it's not changed, this proposal has not changed since we had the informational meetings in October.
In my opinion, it's still overreach if I don't need to go to the planning board to change a window. Now I'm going to have to go through four hoops to change a window.
Pete, all I would say is, read, read the law, and the law addresses if you are replacing or repairing with like-kind, okay? It addresses significant alteration. If you're replacing materials with like-kind materials, you don't need to go through this process.
Robert, I'm reading the law, and it says trim.
Again.
You know, what is trim?
There's a, there's a provision in there for replacing with like-kind. It's when you're changing the materials. For example, if you're going from a siding of one type to a different material, then that's something that the advisory committee would weigh on. That's all, and it'll happen simultaneously with the planning board review. So it actually expedites the process that's already in place now.
There are hoops that the property owner's going to have to jump through, they haven't had to jump through before.
Any other comments? Please, Jeff?
Good evening. Jeffrey Carter, resident of Barretown. My statement is to basically assure the people, you know, Mr. Hubbard's concern. I've been a member of the Hamlet Review Commission ever since probably I was instituted. I was the chairman of that Augusta Institute, arm of the planning board at their pleasure. We serve. And I think in our tenure, we've probably gone through sixty cases similar, you know, to what you can expect in the future. I can say that very few of them have been contentious at all. We work with the landowners, we give our recommendations to the planning board, who can take our recommendations or reject them at their pleasure. So, the mechanism's been in place for quite some time. It's been successful. It's helped preserve the Hamlets, in my opinion, for the last, I don't know when their code went on the books, maybe sixteen years ago. I've been rotated out two times. And I also want to echo Mr. Aldrich's comments, that this is for the common good of the community, that historic preservation is known to be an economic engine. I'm glad to see that the waterfront conservation district has remained essentially unchanged in the allowed usages there. To you, sir, I just want to say that if you have a situation that requires review, that we're very cooperative, and you don't have to worry so much. I guess that's all I got to say right now. And I thank you for, you know, driving this through, or, you know, to propose this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Would anyone else like to make some comments? Mr. Preston?
I have sort of an off-the-wall question. My name is Elliot Bristol. I, my first question is, this historic district, is that fixed in concrete? Is that likely to change? The reason I ask that is because my house is just in the historic district on the east side of 9G, and the house is qualified for the National Register. Now, should I do, should I do that, that protection also? Is this historic district liable to change? And should I consider going to the National Register?
Michelle, did you want to comment on that?
The National Historic Landmark District is, it's not likely to change in the near future. It's a very lengthy process to change the values of that district. Wendy knows much more about that than anybody in the room, and...
Not likely to change in my lifetime, let me put it that way. Because it's designated by the Secretary of the Interior. He's a busy woman, she is a busy woman. And I can't see bringing small boundary changes to Washington. But if there's a need to do so, I'm sure that the community will attempt to do that.
Thank you. I guess that answers my question. I just have a very old house, and I want to make sure it's well protected, and I thank everybody very much.
You can still put it on the register yourself, individual listing.
Thank you.
Did you want to talk about what those implications are if you go on the National Register, Michelle? I think that was part of this question, maybe.
Well, the National Register designation itself does not really afford any protections unless a project is receiving state or federal funding. So in and of itself, that's part of the problem really with this National Registered District, is that it's been identified as being of great significance, the importance of the country, but there are really very few protections in place for it. So it doesn't prevent somebody from demolishing an historic house, you know, if, unless they're receiving state or federal funding. Or unless, unless the property, the project is subject to a seeker review with the planning board, and the planning board, you know, has a little bit more leverage with that. But in and of itself, most people think if it's listed, oh, nobody can demolish that house, but that's moving up, okay? So this provides a little bit more protection.
Okay, there are more comments? If you'd be kind enough to just state your name.
Yes, Dominic Tampon, I live in Upper Red Hook. The first comment I have, or actually perhaps a clarification is, because we really couldn't hear back there, is about the B1 district. The proposal says that there's going to be a change, Michelle, you made a comment about it. So could there be a clarification maybe one more time? Because I know there's perhaps several people interested in understanding what that is, and in particular, some of the people in the back really couldn't hear it. So is there a mistake in the proposed law?
No, there was a mistake to the microphone, but...
Do you want to have him?
Would you like me to speak?
Just for clarification, if they had a hard time hearing.
There was actually a mistake, can you hear me better now?
Not really. Oh, it's not on?
Oh, yes. Is that better? Okay, thank you. There was a mistake in the letter that went out to the landowners. Because what we had done, we had previously considered and included in an earlier draft of the local law, that there would be eight guestrooms per acre with a cap of sixteen. So that had been something that the committee that was drafting the local law had previously considered. And then that cap was deleted. It's not deleted from the existing zoning, it was deleted from an earlier draft of the local law. But somehow that got mixed up in our minds, and it got into the letter that, that there was a cap in the existing zoning law that was being deleted. But no, there's no cap on the number of guestrooms in the existing zoning law, okay?
Is there a proposed cap on the new law?
No, there's no proposed cap. What is proposed in the new law is a slight diminution of permitted density. So it, under the existing law, you're allowed eight guestrooms per acre for the first two acres. More than, if you have more than two acres, you're allowed another guestroom for every 5,000 square feet. So if you calculate 43,560 square feet to the acre, that means that for eight, the third acre, so to speak, or the fourth and all the other acres you have, you're essentially allowed 8.7 guestrooms per acre. Eight for the two, first, first two acres, 8.7 guestrooms per acre for any other acres that you have. And this is proposing, just to simplify it, and just say, eight guestrooms per acre. So in fact, there is a small decrease in the amount, or the number of guestrooms that would be permitted under the zoning law. But bear in mind, as I said earlier, that there are many factors that come into play in limiting the size of a lodging facility, any kind of a facility, such as building height, you know, you can't have a ten-story building, building coverage, lot coverage, setbacks, the amount of parking that's required, the area that's required for store water mitigation facilities and so on. So there are many different things that limit the size of a facility, whether it's a hotel or whatever the facility might be, besides density.
Unfortunately, I've still not done.
That's fine.
I just want to make a comment about public notices in general. Couple of my neighbors in Upper Red Hook, we are just across from Cornucopia, the Michael family, Hoppy and Kathy Michael, they sent in a letter, I just wanted to make sure for the record, that there's an awareness that this letter was sent in. I don't think I need to read it for the record, hopefully, but that there are some documents coming, some postage coming, referring to whatever an individual's opinion is as to their leaning one way or the other. The other thing I'd like to state is, I don't feel the notice was, the notice might have been legal and specific to the regulatory aspect of the town's code, but I don't think the notice took into advice the scope in which some of these laws are taken. In fact, it's kind of interesting, the B1 planning and the whole lodging thing, the genesis of this is a curious situation, because I can go back and look at all of the different things that are documented about the historic situation, which I commend all before. I mean, it's a wonderful town, I've lived here all my life. But I really can't find the genesis, the kernel, how all of a sudden lodging got put into this, and how all of a sudden a large aspect of lodging, whatever district we're in, whatever we agree or don't agree on, it encompasses almost 68% of the landmass of our town. Think of that. 68% of the landmass of Red Hook is going to be changed by this law. So again, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I've never done this before, I'm just commenting. I, I got my letter. It was a courtesy letter, but the law states you're supposed to send the letter, and you're supposed to give us public notice. Or, you know, again, I'm not sure, I'm not criticizing, I'm not here to split hairs. I went on a Daily Freeman website, I couldn't find anything. So I guess what I'm saying is, if you look at the scope and the responsibility that all of us have, one would think that it would perhaps be a little more noticed, the time available would be a little more encompassing. I have, you know, so that's one concern. The other concern is, I actually had to call the paper to say, you know, I have a letter, so many of my neighbors never even got the letter. Some of my other neighbors, whether they want to be recognized here or not, they can speak for themselves, aren't even available to come to it. So, you know, there's definitely nothing about a B1 in the notice. I don't know the law, you're elected, you guys are here to protect all of us. Does that mean we keep the matter open for an expansive period of time to give everybody the rights? Does it mean that we have to re-notice the public hearing? So I just, I'm beating it to death a little bit, but I think it's important for everybody to have the input. Again, it's an interesting thing, historically, you know, the Hamlet in Upper Red Hook is probably the most significantly historic area we have. Two presidents, three generals, governors, one of the oldest in, in our area, part of the stagecoach, I mean, and yet, what we're doing is, we're now looking at changing a law that allows the permissiveness of perhaps unpreviously substantiated or allowed development. If someone has ten acres, according to the regulation, can they then say, I have ten acres, eight rooms per acre? I've hit the lotto! And guess what? That's not noticed anywhere, including in the, the handout, the document that you give us. Your document's fantastic about the historic aspect of it, but it doesn't comment on a B1 at all. So again, I'm just pointing it out that, you know, if one was to read this with a skeptical eye, one would say, you know, there's a, there's a split, there's a dichotomy going on here. The biggest push is for the historic preservation and the actions which are absolutely phenomenal for our town. But contradictory and almost circumventing that in some instances is the application that we're kind of opening our eyes at, by opening our potential to say, if you've got the necessary acreage, you can pretty much do what you want. In addition to, now we are allowing multiple use. It used to be if you were a hotel, you're a hotel, and then you'd have to see what other ancillary uses could be applied and associated with that. Now, somebody can win the trifecta here. They can be a motel, they can be a spa, they can be a restaurant. Does that really fit in the character of what we're trying to do in Upper Red Hook? I mean, if you look at the B1 zoning, my particular instance, the B1 zoning is extremely isolated. It starts at Post Road and it pretty much ends, you know, you know what the district is. You know, there's very limited usage to what we're doing. So, so I have a question about that as well. Oh, I think I was going to be brief, but I guess I'm not.
Do you want it limited, or do you want it expanded? I can't quite understand.
I guess what I'm trying to do is not air my particular view, because I think that polarizes people. But I think what my, the main gist I was trying to say is that I don't think the noticing was proper. I don't think the, I think there's error in the way in which we're doing it. I particularly don't want it expanded, if you're asking my particular view. I think the idea of, you know, we have a fantastic situation. My neighbor happens to have a motel. I've been there forever, since I was growing up. They're dear people to us, and I would see nothing more than that continues. But there is also a question of how much is too much? Because in reality, what happens to them and what they're permitted to do affects my valuation, my situation, I'm right across from the Cornucopia. So I guess what I was trying to do, quite candidly, is frame it, frame it in a manner in which it wasn't polarizing and specific to a particular interest. But absolutely, my interest is in limiting it. My interest is in preservation of the Hamlet of Red Hook. There's literally, you realize there's two businesses in the B1 district in Upper Red Hook. Yet it's almost like an invitation for somebody to say, hey, I'm going to buy that eight acres and I'm going to do what I want. I'm going to put a spa there, I'm going to put a restaurant there, I'm going to serve alcohol. And that's my concern, so I'm actually against it. I'm against, progress can be seen in two different ways. Progress doesn't always mean things getting more dispersed.
Are you done with me?
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, it's okay, I get it, thank you.
No, no, go ahead, keep talking.
Okay. I guess I'm done, I guess I'm done. Thank you.
But, but the B1 district is your concern, you don't want a business district in that part of Upper Red Hook?
Well, it is a business district.
I know, but you...
My concern, my concern is, you're making it so that the potential for someone to have larger facilities, competing facilities to the people next to me, is there. The potential for having a restaurant is there, the potential for a spa is there.
In the B1 district?
In, in our district, the B1 district, correct?
Can you address that?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, the B1 district, the business districts in the town of Red Hook are actually permitted to have more than one principal use, okay? Unlike a residential district where you're only allowed one principal use for property, single-family home or whatever it is, in the B1 district, there's no such limitation. So somebody already could open up, if they had the room and if they could provide the parking and so on, could already open up a restaurant and a spa and anything they wanted, really, any number of things that they could fit onto the property. And of course, the other thing is, as I tried to stress, that there is a slight diminution in the number, in the intensity of a, of a lodging facility that could be developed in the B1 based on this... based on this zoning. You asked about why lodging came up? The lodging came up because the committee that put this proposal together was looking at this area of the town, okay? This area which has this very significant historic resource and the issue of historic preservation. And someone doing that, one of the things they looked at were, what are the various uses that are allowed in this area of the town? And are those uses appropriate? And are there other uses that could, that could be allowed there that might be more appropriate? And they felt that given the properties in this area of the town, some of the larger homes that could be adaptively reused for an inn, that lodging was, would be a good use for some of the districts in this area. So of course, then they looked at lodging in the zoning law and that requires that we consider it. Then they realized there was, there were two different sections that pertain to lodging, one on hotels and motels and one on inns. And when you looked at the definitions of what those two lodging facilities were, you really couldn't tell the difference between them, really. So they thought, let's just make it one category. Of course, then you have to look, where is, where else is lodging allowed? In what other districts? Is there anything that should be considered there? And in the B1 district, they thought, let's try to simplify the density calculation and make it a little simpler. So that's where the lodging came in. Okay? It really came in because we were looking at uses in this other area of the town.
Prior to the proposed law, were multiple uses, could you have a hotel and a restaurant and a spa?
Yeah, that's already, in the B1 district, yes. That's already in the books, already allowed. Yeah.
Michelle?
Yeah, could you speak of the restrictions besides the zoning that a business district own would have to abide by as far as wetlands, as far as, you know, that it's not likely that 100 room inn would ever happen in Red Hook?
Yes, well, I did try to.
Because of all the implications.
I did try to point that out. You know, you do have to provide other things, other things just besides the building with the rooms on the property, you know? There has to be parking, there has to be stormwater management facilities, there has to be access, there has to be landscaping, there are buffers and setbacks and minimum open space requirements and maximum building coverage requirements. And of course, if you have a wetland on the property, if half of the acreage that you have is a wetland, you're probably not going to be able to get eight units per acre and all those other things that you need to develop the site property. So it's, it's, that's really the maximum, that's the maximum you can ever get would be eight units, I would say, eight units per acre. I think there'd be, there's also the shape of the property, like, there's so many different things that affect, you know, it's an ideal eight units per acre, but what actually happens on the ground in your belly milk is, you know, affected by all these things. But I just wanted to explain where the issue of the lodging had come from.
This really does not. He said if you got 10 acres, you can put up 80 different residences, but can you address that?
Any guess?
That was his example, right?
Yes, he was.
Yeah, so explain, if you explain your, like, hypothetical, let her answer it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so hypothetically, if somebody purchased, and they have to purchase seven or eight different properties because most of the properties in that area are very small, hypothetically, if somebody purchased seven or eight different properties and they demolished everything that was on those properties, hypothetically, yes, they could have eight rooms or eight, if it was 10 acre, 80, 80 rooms. But they have to provide, think of the runoff for 80 rooms and all that parking and all the access. It's pretty significant stormwater facilities they have to provide. Whether they could actually get 80 rooms, it's only, they're only allowed to be, I think, two stories high, right? Not, not any higher than that. So there are a lot of constraints prohibiting, I would say, I'm not saying it could never happen, but there are a lot of things that they would have to do to make that happen that would be a challenge.
I think.
You know, there's, there's really no additional stress on the land that exists right now in that, in that business district. And one of the things that Michelle hasn't mentioned is that you have to have a septic system. And believe me, a septic system for 80 rooms is, that equals the East Coast. You know, it, you know, it just can't, it can't be done. So we have really not expanded the opportunity for a great deal more business than exists on those parcels that are there now. It can't happen.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Frank Danielle. I'm a resident of Upper Red Hook and I have to apologize because I wasn't at the earlier presentations and this is the first I've heard of all this. And everything sounds to me like it's been very well thought out, but as a resident of Upper Red Hook, I've heard a lot of different things and a lot of different points of view. And I have just one question that maybe will help to clarify things for us and maybe for some other people here. And if, perhaps if Michelle could just give a simple example of what would be allowed under the new zoning rules in lodging, for lodging in Upper Red Hook that is not presently allowed? Just, you know, a concrete example, not, not just the difference in the requirements, but, you know, an example of what can be built under the new rules that could not have been built under the old rules, just so we can get kind of a clear picture of what's being proposed.
Sure.
Michelle, they're saying that they're going to put big hotels in Upper Red Hook. Could you please explain what the new laws?
Yeah, I don't think that, I think that in fact, what the proposal is doing is actually slightly reducing the number of guestrooms that you could get up there. That's really.
Because I hear a lot of concern, but I'm not sure what the concern is. And so I'm just, if they're, but I, based on what you said.
Frankly, the only reason that B1 is even really even included in the discussion is because we just wanted to simplify the density calculation because it seemed complicated to say eight units for the first acre, two acres, and then, you know, one unit per 5,000 square feet for the remaining acres. We really just wanted to simplify, that's.
So you're not really making it easier to build anything? You're just, it doesn't sound to me like you're really making it, you're allowing something to be built that's substantially different than what was allowed.
Right, it's already allowed to be built there.
Okay, so then what's the difference?
Well, I.
I think that the letter was very confusing and we have to apologize for the letter confusing you. The density change is minor in nature, even if you had 10 acres in the B1, you would have eight per acre versus 8.7. Did that answer what you want to say? Please come right up and.
And there were no additional uses that exist now.
My name is Garth Berger, resident of Upper Red Hook. Also, I think the confusion here is that we don't know what the current laws are. You know, when I found this this morning, I got a letter which, which showed the changes that were being made were very small and insignificant. When I looked online and searched and finally found where it was, it was 22 pages long. That was a lot to absorb and to be honest, I didn't have the time to that because I had to work for a living. I didn't have the time to read 22 pages in one day. Wasn't aware that these changes were being made. So I guess my point is, is that I think a lot of the confusion is that we don't know what the current laws are. It's saying what the changes are. So what I'm seeing is, is that if you're going to change something to eight rooms per, or units, I'm going to say, per acre, if you're going to make that kind of change and it's so ridiculous, it's never going to happen, why do it? Why not make it four? You know, why, why, if you're going to simplify, simplify it to a realistic number? Eight is not realistic.
Just, just so you know, it currently is eight rooms per acre.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, is I've heard that numerous times. What I'm saying is if you're going to change it, make it a realistic number. We're hearing over and over, the board is saying it's not realistic, so why do it? You know, make it four. What's wrong with four? Has that been discussed? You know, those are the kind of things that I'm thinking about. There's nothing, the B1 district is a very small district.
It is.
So what are we, what are we trying to accomplish with that? You know, that, I guess that's my question. It kind of, it smells a little funny to me. Because it seems to me like you're, if you're, my property is 2.3 acres. So if I have, you're saying that I can have, let's see, 19 units? That's crazy.
Not units, not, not.
About rooms.
Guestrooms, yeah.
Rooms, rooms. Units, rooms. So I can't imagine 19 rooms on my property. That's crazy. It's insane. And if we're trying to be historic about it, that's not historic.
Again, just for, just for clarification, that's the business district that you're referring to, not the historic district? And the maximum is eight rooms per acre? It's the maximum, just so you understand.
And just so you understand, I understand the B1 district, which I live in, is directly neighbors the historic district.
To the hamlet?
That's correct. Right, which we're now putting under this historic district. What I'm saying is, is that if we're going to make the change, why not change it to something realistic? And eliminate a lot of the stress that people are concerned about future development in that area? That's, that's my point.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to know.
Doreen, if you would say your name.
Oh, Doreen, Doreen Harrell, it's from Upper Red Hook, I'm sorry. And we are in the business district. So as of this change, from my understanding, we will have 0.7 less per room to work with, which is fine, 0.7 is fine. But my question is, what was the genesis of this change? I have a feeling like something was going on on the river property and has affected that. You know, there's always ramifications and this is just a sidebar of that ramification. So I'm asking, what is, is something being proposed on the river property and what prompted this? It's not a radical change that's happening. It's 0.7. We've looked at this for a year now. We know what the law is, we know what the limits are. So I don't see it to be a big deal at all, but I'm wondering what the genesis of the change was.
How long did this process start, Michelle would say?
2012.
Yeah, so 2012 is when the process of thinking about a historic district's law began. So it's, it's been quite a number of years in the making. And so that's, if you want to talk about the genesis of the historic aspects of the law, that's, you know, when it began, but it was really coming out of the comp plan and, right?
You speak up, Sarah.
Sure. Work on the historic district's law, it's something that started in 2012, but its genesis is really from the comp plan and other documents that were created in the early 2000s that talked about wanting to preserve Red Hook's historic heritage. So that answers your question about the genesis of the law to begin with.
Any other?
Most of the work that was done over these years was on the historic district, not the business district. Issues with the business district came up relatively recently and we, we essentially were neatening, neatening, I can't speak, neatening it up, making it a little bit simpler without making any, with no intention to really significantly change it in any way or for that matter, change it at all.
Did anyone else want to make some comments tonight's public hearing?
And is it true that it seems to me that you're, what you're asking for us to do is to, is to rezone the uses in the business district from what they are now? That you would like to have far less commercial build out in the business district? Now, this is a business district that's been in existence for decades.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess the question, I guess the point is, is that if you're going to make a change and go through this process, and it's a lengthy process, obviously, why not make it something that's realistic and, and makes sense for that B1 district? If the current, the current law is stating that these uses are permitted currently, it obviously is not being done and hasn't been done. So why have it? Why have this, the possibility of there being this crazy amount of rooms per, for a certain parcel? It just seems.
Well, what about the motel? I mean, you're adjacent to the motel, but that exists because of the eight rooms per acre and they want to expand it? And that's a business.
So would we chop off four rooms? Would we have to chop off four rooms?
Well, you want four and you've got eight. So I mean, you want to reduce the potential of any motel, including the existing motels in the B1 district?
What I'm saying is, is that right as it stands now, there's a parcel on there, that there's a parcel in that district that's just under eight acres. And that, so you're saying that there can be a tremendous, and it's a flat parcel, you can have, there's all different ways of making septic systems, built-up systems. I mean, you could, I guess, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm looking to say.
Where is there a B1 per acre that you want in the highway?
Right. It's right across, it's on the corner of, it's on the west, no, the east side. It doesn't matter.
But it's not a B1 district.
It really doesn't matter. The point is that.
It's not a B1 district.
It is. It is. The point is, is that, I'm saying, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you're bothered by this, I really am.
Well, I'm not bothered, except, except there's a huge misunderstanding about, you know, what is proposed apparently. Because if you look at the map, your concern is that somebody can put up, can buy eight acres and you have, or 10 acres, and you have eight units per acre, so somebody can put up an 80-unit motel.
Well, I just want to say bear in mind that there are many, many, many business uses that are allowed in the B1 besides lodging, like they could put in the shopping center, there's all kinds of other things that could be allowed in that district besides lodging, you know? So it's, it's not like this is just suddenly a new use that's been introduced or anything like that. Literally, we wouldn't have even changed it except somebody said, let's just simplify it. Otherwise, it wouldn't even be a change to the B1. You know, it's really just to simplify the calculation of density there. That's the only change that's proposed in the B1.
That's actually not correct. There's never been a definition of a spa in any of our code. A spa's now branded, well, then, then there you go.
Right.
So your statement's not accurate. And I'm not trying to be confronting, but I'm just saying, you understand something. You have to explain things to us because you're the ones writing the laws. So when you ask us, you know, I made the example, perhaps it was incorrect of the 10 acres to 80, but let's say it's four acres, I mean, let's say the church sells, there's five, six, seven acres right next to, you know, Doreen there and they wanted, God forbid, do something. You just mentioned they could put up a mall.
There are all kinds of things that can happen in the B1 district, but I want to clarify about the spa because there are service uses in the zoning law that a spa might have fallen under. And we wanted to clarify that it was this type of a spa, not some other, you know, could be many other different kinds of things. So really, it was again, to try to limit exactly what a spa would be as opposed to many other different kinds of service facilities, okay?
I'm actually agreeing with you, Michelle. I just want to clarify, when everybody says, there's no change, there's no change, it's not accurate. There is change. And I think, if I may, because, you know, there is, seems to be a confusion, let's take it a step down. Everyone's saying, but that will never happen. So the question is, if that will never happen, why don't you legislate what will happen? In other words, why have it so expansive that there's a, there's no potential for a ceiling? So from a legislative standpoint, from a legal standpoint, if you're saying nothing will ever happen, and that's great, and then everybody changes and there's new elected officials and they say, it is going to happen because we're not the same people or we changed our minds. So I think that's what, if I may, what Garth might be, be speaking about and some of our concern. So the 80 might have been just dramatic, but the idea that why can it be capped at so many, period? Or why can't the services that are ancillary to the new definition of lodging be capped, period? Where, again, you can't have lodging plus this, plus this, or perhaps you can, but you have to go through a certain type of an extraneous process.
It is a special permitted use.
An extraneous.
It is a special permitted use, so it's not, there, there are all those things that are taken into consideration, impacts on the community, character and those kinds of things, none as a right use, those require special permits. So, but it is possible that somebody could propose eight units per acre. That is possible, okay? And the committee who drafted this, the local law, didn't feel that that was a problem in that district. So you feel differently and I think that they're hearing your comments.
Maybe they should go to the zoning review committee with that.
Yeah, if that's a significant concern, that's absolutely the kind of thing the zoning review committee would, would look at.
Yeah. Lori?
Oh, Lori, who stood with my Town of Red Hook Conservation Advisory Council hat on. I don't even know if I want to ask this question, but you mentioned our solarized campaign, trying to get solar on residential homes and commercial businesses throughout Northern Dutchess. And part of the allure of our campaign is our unified solar permit where homeowners under 12 kilowatts, it's a very streamlined way of getting solar on their roofs. If this, if this were in place and if you were a homeowner in that district, would you have to go through this hamlet review committee and what would the timeframe be for the, it probably says in here what the timeframe is for their decision?
Sure, I can, I can skip that. So we have thought about this because we, and a lot of people are interested in. So we have thought about this, because we, and a lot of people are interested in solar permitting. We all just come in evangelical. Okay, so if you're in the hamlet right now, and you want to put solar panels up, whether it's a freestanding, you know, panel operation or on your roof, you would have to go before the hamlet review committee, right? Because it's an alteration or a new construction, is what it would be called, and it would also be reviewed by the planning board, okay? So that's what happens right now in the hamlets. Those provisions are, will now, if this law passes, be extended to all the areas we've talked about, the whole historic district and those five properties. So what that is, is it's an extra layer of review, right? It's an added layer of review for the properties that aren't in the hamlet district right now. It is. But it's going before Jeff and Chris and the design review committee, and, and the planning board. It's usually going to take one meeting, you know, maybe more if it's an extensive review, but we believe it's going to be a pretty streamlined process between the two boards, because they're gonna, one, one new thing in this law is they're going to get the applications at the same time. Right now, if you're in the hamlet, when you apply for a change, and the design review committee has to look at it, first it goes to the planning board, and then the planning board has to refer it to the design review committee. It's, you know, it's quite a process when these boards only meet maybe once a month, two times a month. Now, it's going to go to them simultaneously, which is going to cut down the time for the review. So it's hard to predict, because obviously, every project's going to be different. If you're trying to put your solar panels on a historic home, you know, that's potentially going to take some review, you know, depending on the situation. Does that help at all? It's, there's nothing in the law that says you can't do solar, but it is going to have that layer of review.
So it's not an historic structure? There's no way not to appear in front of the planning board?
Okay, so if you, if you have a home that's a modern home, you're still going to have to start the review process, but if the, if the planning board receives your application, and they see that you're not a historic home, then they will, they can make a motion to, what's the word? It's not wait, wait?
Wait, or that the, those provisions will not be-
No. That a certificate of appropriateness is not required. So they can make that resolution, and then you're done. So technically, there's still one meeting, but you're, you're done. Does that make sense? So then you're not waiting for the review process to continue?
Lori, any, any, any addition of solar to a house requires a building permit, and the building permit would initiate whatever action is appropriate. Most of the town, you just get a building permit from the building inspector. But if you're in the historic district, it would take a, the design review committee would take a look at it, is what it boils down to. Until they become historic elements.
Would anybody else like to make some comments? Norman?
Norman Gregg, I farm in Red Hook. My, I've been here for a lifetime, and my father was instrumental in getting the first zoning through in 1973. When I travel, every time I come back to the Hudson Valley, I think, "Oh, my God, it's sort of the most beautiful place in the whole world." And I think we're very fortunate in being settled early here. We have a lot of history. And I think we all champion our history, and we all are clear that, that that's part of what makes Red Hook an incredible place to live. I'm aware on the farm that we have one house that was built in the 1730s. We have a barn that was built in the 1850s. I have another barn that was built in the 1870s. I have an addition that I put on the barn that was built in 1981. In the new code, it doesn't talk about what's historic, or what isn't historic, or what's going to come under this, this ruling, or what's not going to come under this ruling. But I'd like to speak to, for a minute, to what's not working in Red Hook, and then tie that into my concern about the historic review. What's not working in Red Hook is, we have the zoning code, it's not consecutively numbered, so I don't know how many pages it is, it's about five pounds. It says in the zoning code that the zoning officer is supposed to interpret the zoning code for the planning board and the ZVA. But the zoning code has gotten so complicated that the zoning officer doesn't do that, even though that's written in the law. So what happens now is, the planning consultant comes and interprets the law, and you have an attorney at every meeting who interprets the law, which, and the town has gone to some trouble to defend themselves from these costs. And so what's happened is, they pass along those costs to the applicant. So although the application fee is relatively nominal, you can't get out of the planning board or ZVA for under $1,000 for almost any proposal. And, and if, and what happens is, if the, the planning board, as soon as you arrive there, they want a stamp from an architect and a stamp from an engineer. Well, as a farmer, I'm very aware that the Amish can put up a new barn in three days, but I know to get the new barn in Red Hook takes 18 months. So this is, it's an issue. So my concern is when you decide on a historic review, and you don't have a definition of what historic review is, so we don't know what's going to end up in front of this committee or what's not. I have no problem with the committee. I think that's wonderful. But the fact that you have to go to the planning board first, well, if you decide you're going to put a new roof on the 1730s house, and you arrive to the planning board, and they're going to want the architect's stamp, and before you go to the committee, it gets complicated. That's what's not working. And, and passing all along the cost to the applicant over and over again, I realize that that gives you a very small constituency, and that constituency is divided, so that they don't have a class action suit against the town about the added costs. But it's, it's very difficult to do business in the town of Red Hook. And agriculture is a business. And, I mean, one of the things we're faced with in, with these historic buildings is economies of size. So we have, the one barn I have is 16,000 square feet. It was, it was built in the 1850s. It accommodated historically 10 cows, six horses, and a place for the, for 250 chickens. And, you know, and it was all one barn. Now, if we do adaptive reuse, we talked about building an inn there, the new code now says, although you can have eight rooms per acre in the business, B-1 district, you can't have more than 10 rooms on 93 acres in the agricultural zone. Now, we've been open to the public. I mean, I love the farm. I love Red Hook. I love our ambiance. And my, in my 50 years farming there, we've been open to the public and tried to share that abundance with the public. What we wanted to have in the inn was an agricultural, you know, to celebrate that barn, to show the historic structure, to have an agricultural retreat, where people can appreciate that night sky and, and participate with, with the agricultural abundance. The new code that you're proposing says two seats per room. Well, a 20-seat restaurant, I have to tell you, that's not an economy of size. That's not, there's, there's no restaurant in Red Hook that's 20 seats. And that's Thanksgiving dinner at the farm. That's not, and, and if you're feeding the people that stay at the inn, and you're supposedly open to the community, you're not, I mean, no one can get a seat there. And it's not enough to hire someone to cook. So although, yeah, those are some of the issues. And, and I would respectfully request that, that the town says they love agriculture, but they love the pastoral aspect, you know? Your idea of farming is 80 acres with three horses or 10 cows, but you're not talking about anything commercial. And if we don't have something commercial, we don't survive. And it doesn't matter whether you're talking about the land or about the buildings. If they don't have a use that pays the taxes, then they don't survive. You know, the old barns burned down. They burned down because they don't have a use. That's all I've got. There's, there's a lot of stuff in the B-1. You know, I have a, I have a huge problem with the zoning code that tells me where I can live as a farmer, as a principal occupant of the house. And if you look at the code, it's existing, so it's not part of the change. But I'm not allowed to live in the B-1. Well, I just spent a year working on a house in the B-1, and according to the code, as a farm owner, I can't live in that? I mean, we should have a code that talks about where the attorney should live in Red Hook. I mean, you know?
Thank you, Norman.
I did just want to clarify about the 20 seats, because it's not, the proposal's not to limit a restaurant to 20 seats. The proposal is that currently, you can, if you have a restaurant associated with a farm market, you have to get a special permit for the restaurant. And what this saying, is saying is that if you have fewer than 20 seats, you don't have to have a special permit. You can still have more than 20 seats. It's just that there's no special permit required for fewer than, just to clarify, fewer than 20 seats.
Respectfully, the code says, if you have an inn on the farm here, limited to 10 rooms, and the restaurant associated with it is limited to two seats per room in the inn.
So that's a separate use. We're talking about restaurants with farm markets? Like, your farm market might have a restaurant?
I'm talking about the inn.
Right, but that's not being changed.
I'm still talking about the inn.
Right. Okay, so that's not-
I'm still talking about the inn.
I'm just saying, that's not in this law. Okay, that, those ends are not-
It isn't this law.
No. Not the restaurant part of it.
The inn, associated restaurant, is in the law. Two seats per room. It's 19, it's 39 pages, you can read it. It's there.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else like to speak? Jim?
Hello, I'm Jim Rudig, student at TIBLY. And I just have a question about the historic district and its impact on contemporary buildings on at Bard College, where I work. I understand that there's an architectural review for outside of buildings, if there's going to be modification. Is that correct?
That's, that's a part of, of the legislation, the update to the legislation.
How does that work practically in an institution like ours, where we're replacing doors and windows on a daily basis? So operationally, it doesn't work, but there's a contemplation of this being a law or requirement. So if you could comment on that, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make some comments? The public hearing?
What you're talking about, Jim, is maintenance, right? Maintaining the building and doing the repairs and putting the hinges back on the door.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're, as you know, you take some of these buildings, they have thousands of door openings a day.
Yeah.
And they break, and they have to replace them, and we'll do that. And then we're going ahead and replace the doors, and we're not going to have time to wait for somebody to say, "Yes, you should replace the door." So I don't know what value there is in having a law that is, has no practical value to the institution in this case. It may have value in other situations, in other historical homes in area, but, you know, we have, you know, 120 buildings on campus. Most of them modern and heavily used.
You don't need a, a building permit to do, to do maintenance work. If you're replacing windows, you do, but-
Right. But my understanding of this overlay, that it can, that this historic change wouldn't impact what I was just talking about, is that correct?
So there's an exception. Alteration shall not include routine maintenance or repair of a regulated structure required by normal wear and tear with the same materials, unless such maintenance would result in a change in the architectural appearance of the structure.
So we can, we can do maintenance without-
Yes.
Right. That's the intent.
Michelle, I wonder if you could speak to the part of the law, because Norman and Jim brought up an important question, which is, how do we define what's historic? And how do we, you know, how does, how do we decide what, you know, something that we've talked about before with this law is that we don't define what's historic, we haven't, you know, limited it to a certain period of time, or, you know, I think maybe people are concerned about what is going to be considered historic and not. You know, you have such a eclectic mix of buildings on your campus, you know, modern and, you know, Fisher Center is a great example. I know that came up in one of the public meetings we had before.
Yes, it's a complicated situation. First of all, it would not apply to barns and so on, outside of the, you know, these identified areas. There is a provision that allows an exception to this, to the, to the law for buildings of exceptional architectural merit, such as the Fisher Center and the new science building. So, you know, it's, they make a very distinctive contribution. And in terms of the National Historic Landmark District, there, 90% of the buildings in the National Historic Landmark District have been included on, were included on the 1990 survey of the structures for the definition of the district. So it's a very high number, exceptionally high number of historic buildings in that area. One of the things we had considered doing was making it apply only to contributing structures, which are those structures I just mentioned. Only, make it only apply to those contributing structures. The difficulty with that is, it's very difficult for the building department to figure out, is this a contributing structure or not? You know, one property might have 30 different contributing structures on it, you know, is, is this the hen house that's mentioned or not? You know, it's, it made it very difficult. So the process that we have set up instead is that every application within this area would be sent simultaneously to the zoning review committee and to the planning board. The zoning review committee is, will make its recommendations prior to the next planning board meeting.
Design.
Sorry, the design review committee, sorry. Will make its recommendations prior to the next planning board meeting, so that at the very first time that the applicant appears before the planning board, the planning board has the recommendations of the design review committee, which speeds up the process over what's currently happening by a week or two. So the applicant, the planning board, the planning board has a design review committee comment, and they can say whether a certificate of appropriateness is going to be required or not. And if they feel that that man is required, then that's the end of the process. So is that addressing what your question?
Yeah, I think so. And just, you know, that it's, this isn't meant to, you know, to make people think we're, that we're not going to allow, you know, an interesting, modern architectural idea in the district. It's, it's for preserving the cultural heritage and historical heritage of existing buildings, but certainly other things that get proposed in the future will be on the table. You know, it's not trying to, like, limit anything that happens in that district to the period between 1850 and 1950 or something like that, just in case you're concerned about whether architectural activity will still, you know, allow in the future.
Is there anyone else who would like to make some comments? Okay, thank you all very much for your input. I would also like to take this opportunity to let you know that we welcome any ideas you may have about this legislation or any other legislation going forward. You can reach out to us, certainly can reach out to my office by phone, by email, however you prefer. I'll make myself available to you, either in person or, or by phone.
How long will the record be open for? What's written comments?
Well, we'll, we'll get to that, Wendy, in just a minute. Also, we have written correspondence. We have a letter dated February 24th, that would be today, from Genevieve Trigg. And we would like to have those written comments entered into the record soon. Well, does the board have any comments they would like to make, any additional comments? Or do we want to consider whether to hold open the public hearing until our next meeting? Or to make any changes? I have one suggestion on a potential change.
What I would suggest, we leave the, the public hearing open, and we'll, we'll get to D-Day each hour.
Okay, all right. So our next meeting is March 8. Jim, are you hoping to the idea of leaving-
Particularly with some of the comments about the confusion of our notice and so on.
Okay, and give, give folks additional time to read the current law and compare it to what update is, is being proposed. Okay. Sarah, are you okay? Sarah, are you okay with that idea?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to keep it open until the next meeting, at least.
Okay, that's March 8.
And that would mean that written comments would be accepted through March 8 as well, right?
That's, that's correct.
And we're, if people, I know people can send them by mail, but what about emails? Is there a way to do that? And what address would they use?
Yeah, they, we, we welcome, if you wanted, on the record. You're welcome to send it to my attention, but please do be sure to copy the town clerk, who's the official record keeper. You can get our email addresses on the website. It's rmacian@redhook.org. And it's smacan. We're not related, even though it sounds quite similar. So Bill, are you okay with leaving the, a public hearing open until March 8? Okay. And then I, I just referenced, there was some discussion about clarification. A lot of the additional zoning language outside of the historic district area relates to trying to further clarify the code and the language of the code. And we discussed in particular, I think, the language that's associated with lodging in the agricultural business district. We were trying to clarify, I think in the handout for folks, we were trying to clarify the fact that parcels would be eligible for more than 10 rooms, but 16 rooms, if they had access from a state highway. And if you look at your handout there, it's in the, in the boxes here, the languages. But I would also like to add just a few words to what I believe is page 20, that language in there. Is that correct? Michelle, I have it on page 20?
Yes, it is on page 20.
Okay. So page 21, 4392, A1.
And A2, I think.
Is it A2?
A2 and A1.
A2, yes. A2 and A1. I believe the intent of the law was to allow for additional rooms if the properties abutted a state highway. And so I would suggest we add in those two sections, 1 and 2, the language, unless lot frontage and access, as opposed to just access. I don't think we intended to have access go through behind people's backyards from a state highway in order to access a facility for those purposes. Does that, does that make sense to you, Bill?
Yeah, sure.
So Sarah, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, we discussed this change in our intermunicipal task force meeting, which is every Friday morning, if you're interested in having it, it's an open meeting. It's a good time. And we discussed this, and we all agreed that it's, it's a good change to include in this law at this time.
Harry, are you okay with the inclusion of those three words?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim?
Where are you proposing to put these words?
Okay, so 14392, A1 and 2?
Well, A1 and 2 don't read the same. A1 reads 10 guestrooms in the AB district unless access to the facility is provided from a state highway.
Right.
In which case lodging facility shall be limited to 16 guestrooms. A2 says 25 guestrooms in the LDNI, provided that access to the facility is provided from a state or county highway. So that, that both of those are not the same.
Right. So what, what I'm proposing is that we add those three words, lot, frontage, and to both 1 and 2, to further clarify that the intention was if those parcels bordered a state highway. So.
Or bordered a state or county highway.
State or county highway, yes, in the, in the instance of 2. So I can read it to you if you like, Jim.
I, I, I don't really see, I don't see the need for that. I mean, if they have access, that means they have a driveway or right-of-way. They might not have, you made your statement, the first time you said had, had road frontage. Now you're calling that bordered. What does bordered mean? Is it, if you have a driveway to a, a state or county highway, is that bordered?
No, I'm just saying it has lot frontage, that the actual parcel has frontage on the state highway. I don't think we intended for the access to be on someone else's property. That we intended the access, the additional rooms, to be on parcels that had frontage on the state highway.
What about parcels of the same ownership?
Yeah, I, I don't see, see the need for that. I mean, even if it was somebody else's property, for, somebody else isn't going to give them a, a right-of-way or what have you, you know, for an investment or for something like that, unless there's a good reason. I, I can't see if that makes any difference. I think that limits it a little bit too much from my perspective, Robert.
Is there any other discussion on, on the proposed change to the draft?
Well, a new draft, we could ask that.
And I'll, I'll address that if, if we do have a new draft.
Where did the, if I might, this, seats in the restaurant based on two per guestroom, addressing Norman's contention, I mean, at the most, you're looking at 32-seat restaurant. Does that come out of some manual? Because 32-seat restaurant is pretty small, and I doubt it'd be feasible, economically Is that, I mean, some of this stuff just doesn't make economic sense.
Are you, you're reading, you're reading from this chart?
I'm reading from page 20.
If I could just say again, too, that, you know, when we write the zoning law, when we amend the zoning law, it's very difficult to amend just a few words in a section. So what we do is we re-adopt the entire section. So that section may have only a few minor changes, but we re-adopt the first, the whole section so that when general code takes it, puts it online, there's no confusion. So that's actually currently in the, on the, in the, in the zoning law. That number is what was.
You know, I'm not disputing the number. I'm just wondering, you know, I'm just saying it doesn't make economic sense to me as somebody that has valued restaurants, numerous restaurants. 32 seats is, is a minimum for a restaurant to be economically feasible.
Okay. So that's, that's a substantive comment, but I'm just trying to clarify that it's not, this is not something that's new, that's being introduced.
Yeah, I understand. I just was wondering if there's any economic reality behind some of these numbers.
Again, Pete, we would welcome any suggestions you have on that area. That's not changing as a part of this proposal. So if you or the ad committee or the zoning review committee.
Probably Chris.
Have any.
Maybe the economic development would.
Yeah. If you have any recommendations, we would welcome it and take a look at. We're, we're always open to change and, and evolving. I noticed that somebody made reference to the WC, and we've had a couple of requests to review the uses in the WC as well, to make sure that that's appropriate. But I do want to get back to the suggestion that we make those changes, because if we make those changes, we'll need to make a change to the document. We'll have to re-notice the public hearing for the next town board meeting, if that's what we wish. So, Bill, would you like to make a motion?
If we change these three words, we have to have a whole new public hearing and notice. And there's, and there's no other change than the 2116 draft?
There's no other change that you proposed.
The 2116, yeah. So I make a motion then to amend page 20 under section 143-92, label lodging, capital A, subdivision 1, to add the words after unless lot, frontage, and. And then to read access to the facilities provided from state highway. So to leave the sentence as it is, with the exception of adding those simple three words, unless lot, frontage, and.
And Bill, and 2 as well, you said.
Leave everything else to Wendy.
No, no, your discussion was.
Number 2.
1 and 2 both.
Section number 2.
Okay, the same, the same application for 2.
Or just to be consistent.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, where, where would you put that into then? I mean, if we, if you're proposing to changes, we should be explicit as to where, because there's no unless, that access to.
After provided.
Provided.
To add lot, frontage, and access to the facility.
There you go. The, the language, Jim, I can read it to you if you like.
You said provided twice in the sentence, but maybe.
25 guestrooms in the LDNI districts, provided that lot, frontage, and access to the facility is provided from a state or county highway. Not the best sentence, but it's clear. Yeah?
So you're, you're adding two words, lot, frontage.
Lot, frontage, and.
And, three words.
Three words. I can count in.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Do you want me to second it?
Yes, Sarah.
Sarah did.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You gonna ask if anybody's opposed, Robert?
Jim?
Yes, I'm opposed.
There you go. Motion, Carrie. Okay.
And I guess if it's necessary, further move to establish a, to continue this public hearing to March 8, and to establish a new public hearing on March 8 with respect to the proposed amendment language, which was just.
We can re-notice for that.
We're gonna re-notice, and our attorney has prepared a resolution. Resolution number?
16.
16. David, February 24th of 2016. Bill, would you like to read this resolution?
Not really, the whole thing.
Do you want me to read it briefly?
Just brief, yeah, briefly. We don't need to read each and every.
Our attorney is willing to, to take you up on that offer.
So this is a resolution establishing a pro-public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook of local law seat proposed of 2016 as revised regarding zoning. Whereas on February 9, the proposed form of local law C was submitted to town board. Whereas the public hearing was duly, a public hearing was duly held on February 24th. At said time and place, all persons in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to the proposed local law. Whereas on February 24, the proposed form of a local law C, as revised, was submitted to the town board, and that's obviously in, in amendment form. Whereas the proposed amendments to the zoning law are consistent with the recommendations of the town's comprehensive plan. And whereas pursuant to section 259M of the general municipal law, proposed amendments must be referred to the Department of Planning Development of the county for its review and report thereon. Now therefore be it resolved. The action has been classified as a type 1 action, and the town board has designated itself as lead agency, and there are no other involved agencies. Number 2, the town board shall hold, hold a further public hearing on March 8 at?
7:35?
7:35 PM at the town hall to hear all interested persons on said proposed local law as revised. Number 3, the town clerk is authorized to publish notice of said public hearing in the Providence Journal and the Kingston Freeban, official newspaper of the town, on or before February 27, which is not less than 10 calendar days prior to the date of said public hearing. Number 4, the town clerk is authorized to refer a copy of the local law revised to the planning board, together with a copy of the EAF, for report and recommendation thereon. And pursuant to section 6812C of the town code for recommendations regarding consistency with the local waterfront renovation plan, town clerk is authorized to refer a copy of the local law, together with a copy of the EAF to the Dutch County Department of Planning Development for report and recommendation pursuant to section 259M of the general municipal law. And the town clerk is authorized to direct a stand notice of public hearing to the clerks of adjacent municipalities.
I have a question before we vote on that. The last where, we don't say Dutch County before Department of Planning, is that important?
I'm sorry, Dutch County.
The last where.
In 5? The second to last? Oh, no, I don't think it's important, because the whereas is the one that identifies the place where she's actually.
Yeah, okay.
So that's a motion. Would somebody like to second Bill's motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? For clarification for the public, there'll be a new public hearing regarding the slightly changed proposal on March 8 at 7:35. Your comments will be welcome then, and also in writing between now and then.
And this hearing is continuing, is the motion?
And this hearing is continuing as well.
So the motion reporting on now is the one that Chris just read, correct?
Before you vote on the motion, can I suggest that you might want to amend the time? Because you might want to go through some of the other materials in the EAF and so forth before.
Before the meeting?
Finish the public hearing.
Okay.
So if we could leave a little bit more time for you to do that?
Okay, so.
In the process there, if you're scheduling.
Perhaps 7:50, would you think, would be appropriate?
Right.
Okay, 7:50.
And maybe we could ask those who voted to.
Bill, would you be kind to amend your motion?
To amend the motion to 7:50.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? I'm a little confused. We're actually going to keep this public hearing open and also have a new one. I just want to be clear about that, because it seems a little, like, are, are we then going to have people speak in this one that's continuing, close that, and then reopen it, and then open a new one? I just want to make sure we, you know.
Well, we haven't closed the old hearing.
Yeah.
We haven't closed this hearing yet.
Right.
Yeah, we've closed it.
We could close it tonight.
I'm just wondering, why not if we're?
Well, before we started this discussion, we had discussion about leaving this hearing open until next week, or next week. And then this other discussion came up to modify this as well.
Yeah, and, and I want, I want to keep the public hearing open. My question is, how do we handle it next meeting? Like, do we open? Do you know what I'm saying?
We'll work it out. Don't worry.
Okay.
We start with this, with this public hearing first.
It's the same public.
And then we close that one and open another one.
Just re-noticing the particular three words.
We're re-noticing it, but we can certainly.
We keep our premises as a new public hearing, so I just want to make sure that we're closing ones that are open and opening new ones if that's what we're really.
Because we haven't had a public hearing on these three words. They need a new public.
That's fine.
Is there, is there a second for that revised motion?
Second, if nobody else second.
Okay.
Well, I hope we already had it. We've been discussing it.
Any, any?
To be clear, the motion was by Bill, seconded by Sarah, and if we're going to amend that motion, it would be preferable to have those two.
Okay.
The motion to amend it, Lee.
Okay. Sarah, would you like to second that amended motion? Okay, any further discussion?
I'd just like to understand that the amendment was Bill's motion that Chris read, and now it was amended so that it also includes keeping this public hearing open. Is that correct?
No, it's amended to change the time, excuse me.
Oh.
To change the time.
We'll just change the time from 7:35 to 7:50.
Can we take a break here? You can take a break.
Very good. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We will see you.
Five minutes?
We welcome any recommendations you have on changes. Thank you.
Let me ask these people what their question is.
All right.
Stupid hearing.
Okay. We are moving right along. Bill?
Let's take a quick break.
So would we like to take a five-minute break?
Second.
Bill wants a five-minute break.
Sarah, are you making that motion?
I will take a quick break.
Harry, would you like to, would you like to second Sarah's motion? We take a quick break.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that we resume the town board meeting of February 24th. The time is now nine thirty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What if we said no, Robert?
Well, then I think we go home, Robert, I think. Thank you very much.
Why didn't you say that sooner?
Okay. Very good. So where, where were we running left off?
I think we finished quite a morning.
Unannounced break. Okay, well, as you know, we are progressing with the Route 9 pedestrian improvements, and for the folks at home, we have federal funds, a significant amount of money, to construct sidewalks on the eastern portion of Route 9 that will take us down south towards Hanafur. And the engineers who have been working on this project have come to a draft plan which we are ready to submit. And tonight, as part of that process, and part of the review, the town needs to make a determination on who will be lead agency for that project, and our attorney for the town has prepared a resolution. And Harry, I thought maybe if, since you are the liaison for the highway department, if you would like to read this resolution?
Okay. Resolution declaring lead agency for the New York State Route 9 sidewalk improvement project. Whereas the town of Red Hook has been awarded a grant through the Transportation Alternatives Program for project entitled NYS Route 9 Sidewalk Improvement, TIN 8761.24, the project. And whereas, grant funds will be used for the purpose of sidewalk improvements along New York State Route 9 from Hardscrabble Plaza to Red Hook Town Hall, and whereas, a full environmental assessment form has been prepared in connection with the project. And whereas, the town board of the town of Red Hook has performed a preliminary review of the environmental assessment form, and whereas, in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, said board is required to determine the clear classification of a proposed action, and now therefore be resolved that the town board of the town of Red Hook hereby determines that the proposed action is a type-one action under SECR. It further resolved that the town, Red Hook Town Board declares its intent to assume lead agency status in connection with a SECR review of this project, and hereby instructs the town clerk of the town of Red Hook to circulate notice of its intent to all interested or involved agencies identified in the EAF. And I so moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
And Mr. Supervisor, could I just note that the, the EAF was prepared by the consulting engineer for the project. It does identify DOT as a potential involved agency, so we would circulate to them. It also identifies, you know, and it describes the project. I think you all have received the preliminary design report from the engineers, correct?
There's, they left us just.
Presentation?
Just one, one copy of the submission.
Right.
Which will be available in the town clerk's office. And the presentation, as the public knows, of the aspects of the project was made quite some time ago. In fact, I noticed, we still have the aerial up there, Steve, if you'd like to pan on that for a moment. Hudson Valley Engineering Associates, Kane, Jack Gordon, and gave a presentation to the public on, on the project. And so this is the draft plan that they just completed, which will be available for inspection here at town hall.
And so, this is, this is being designated as a type-one, and so it will undergo a full EAF review, but that's why they prepared the full EAF instead of just a short one. We will circulate to DOT, and we would expect that they would acquiesce to our acting as lead agency. So at the next meeting, the board would have an opportunity to go through the potential impacts, and so we will review that in detail at the next meeting. The potential impacts really are expected to be very limited. I have some preliminary information from the engineers for your review, and I will, I will forward that to you in advance of the meeting. If you look at the design report, when you have an opportunity, you should, you should look through that. There is discussion of the, the various design criteria and their review of disturbed cultural resources, and their determination that there aren't any potentially impacted resources from that perspective in connection with this project. They really don't identify any significant impacts, but we are following the process because we are, we're not going up to the St. Margaret's facility, but it's in the neighborhood of that facility, so in excess of caution, we are going through this process because it is a nearby facility, even though we're not going to be affecting that facility. Okay?
So, otherwise it would have been.
Unlisted.
Unlisted action, right?
Correct.
And a short form would have been prepared, but we're looking at a type-one, okay? So we're not adopting the EAF tonight.
Correct.
We're acknowledging that it's been prepared, and we'll adopt it at a future date once we review it.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a second of a motion. Are we ready to vote on it? A resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, the resolution is approved.
Number seventeen.
Number seventeen of 2016. And again, as a reminder for the public, we expect to have this project in the fall available to award, provided we have acceptable bids and construction to begin then, preparation. The sidewalk itself, it's anticipated will actually occur next spring in 2017. We hope to have the work concluded.
And if I can just, for the clerk, we'll work with you tomorrow to get the lead agency notice out to DOT.
Okay.
We'll work with you on that.
Okay, thanks.
And then you'll have the EAF on file.
Okay, item number two on the agenda. I see our highway superintendent had to leave, but there was a request that she made, I believe in January at the first or second meeting, to have a town of Red Hook credit card available to her and her alone as the highway superintendent, so that when they have to make sort of random part purchases for various vehicles and instruments, that she will not have to shell out her own funds and then wait to get reimbursed for that. I have been working with the town bookkeeper to take a look at some examples of policies that other communities in our area have in place, because I know that while we want to, you know, make it easy and convenient to purchase these parts, especially since we have people in our employ that can repair these vehicles, we do also want to make sure that we have appropriate safeguards, and in fact, you know, perhaps include credit limits and so on and so forth. But I just wanted to share with you some examples, and then ask maybe, Harry, since you're the liaison to the highway department, whether or not you would work with Teresa and look at these examples, and then make some proposal to the town board, provided there's enough support tonight to at least explore the possibility. Would anybody like to, to chime in on this? Sarah?
I think it's a good idea to consider it, and I think we should all look through the examples you gave us, so we can decide what makes sense for Red Hook.
Okay. Bill?
Well, I hope you all approve, but I'm not gonna vote for it, because I think it's the first problem in any kind of town business, is to give a credit card to anybody. But Teresa, I would trust more than anybody, but still.
Okay.
You know, that's just the way I feel.
Even with a policy and a limit placed on that card?
There's no such thing as policy. It gets over the misuse of a credit card.
Okay.
Am I right, man?
Mm-hmm. All right?
Yeah, I'm inclined to, to allow a credit card to the, to the highway superintendent for the purpose of buying, buying parts by, by, by mail, which we often do, and it, and right now it's very difficult. We don't have, we have accounts locally where we can charge, and that works all right, where we, where we would get a bill and a statement. But when, when they're out of town, it's very handy to be able to call, call some, some agency or firm. Amazon is a great source of the parts, of many of the parts we use, we use there, and it's very difficult to deal with. Right now, she uses her personal credit card for that and then gets reimbursed, and it's actually expensive for us to do that, go through that process of reimbursement rather than be directly on a credit card that we can pay directly as a, as a single item on a monthly basis.
Jim?
No, I'm in favor, Robert, Rob. I was, in fact, just while we were talking, I was reading the, the policy examples that we have from some neighboring towns, and actually Rhinebeck seems to be one of the simple ones, and it, I think it makes a lot of sense, and of course, it is our responsibility to audit it, as we do everything every month, on a monthly basis, but for the convenience and time-saving thing, I think it would be a worthwhile thing to do.
Okay.
You thought of having Harry sit down with Teresa and look and decide what they think for a policy, if it's a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, since, since we do like to have two board members sometimes in these meetings, I wondered maybe if it would be appropriate, Harry, Bill, if, since you have two different viewpoints on this, if the both of you might sit down and see if, if we could craft something that would make you feel a little more comfortable and.
No, no, I, it's not a matter of language, it's just a matter of principle.
Okay. All right.
But if you guys vote for it, that'd be good.
Well, at this point, we're just voting to, to move, move it along in the discussion, and to ask Harry to work with the highway superintendent to come up with some, potentially some proposal for the board to consider.
So I think it's simple in this case, since it's, it's a single person in, in, in the, in the town government, for the, the use of, of, of a person who has a particular need for it, rather than many of these, many of these, the issues that are addressed in, in these other, other towns have to do with a, a policy related to a number of people in your town having credit cards. And that one we told you about.
Okay.
That was a motion, Robert?
I guess, what were you gonna say? I, I actually would like to see us think about a policy that could apply to more people just in case in the future this comes up again. I'm not saying that I'm interested in finding out who else wants a credit card, I just don't, I'm not sure why we would just write a policy specific to the highway superintendent when it's possible that someday, I don't know, supervisor or the town clerk or, you know, I'm, I'm not sure yet, Susan's shaking her head. I'm saying that there, there might be, you know, example, reasons why other towns have adopted policies that apply to more than one employee, and I'd, I'd kind of hate to see us write a policy that's so specific and then we have to adopt another one later, when it's, it's not hard to write a policy that would apply to any town employee, and then specifically say, in this case it applies, you know, we're allowing Teresa to take advantage of that policy. That's my opinion, but.
Okay.
I'm inclined to vote, to take baby steps. Do one.
Right, I don't know if we have to limit it to one, Harry, but, you know, the, the state office of OGS gives us guidelines with that, and we can.
Yeah.
The only thing I want to know, then, if we do that, then who gets, who gets the air miles?
I'm sure there's a state law.
Just, just.
That's actually a good point, I just want, just for the public's information, you know, the state comptroller's office recommends, we have this printout here from the comptroller's office, that recommends that we not open a credit card that allows any kinds of points to accrue, or, you know, any, any of those kinds of situations, because of course you can see immediately that there would be some interesting.
Even there's such a thing.
Right.
And, and not to short-circuit your, your recommendation, Harry, but the highway department, different than other departments, needs to purchase these items on a very frequent basis, which may not be the case with other departments. But we look forward to hearing more about it from you, Harry. Maybe it's something you want to bring forward at one of our March meetings, then?
Sure.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, was that a motion that you were making?
Well, I think we're just encouraging Harry to bring us something back in March, so we don't need a motion, I think, for that, if everybody's okay with that. Okay. All right, well, before we get to our board reports, we just have one thing we need to do on reorg, and I apologize if you don't have your list of 2016 town appointments. We have a couple of letters of interest from individuals. We're not ready to appoint them yet, because the various chairs would like to invite them to meetings and, and see if they're still interested. But we do need to finalize our assessment review board, because we are moving into the spring period where they'll need to get their training and certifications. And I spoke to our chair, Carl Dowden, and reached out to the one member who was eligible for reappointment, and that member, Jane Bezinski, her term expired in 2015, it's a five-year appointment. Carl thought that she was a very helpful addition to the assessment review board, and he recommends that we reappoint her. Jane is interested in being reappointed, so I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Jane Bezinski to the assessment review board with the term expiring in 2020. Is there a second?
Oh, second, I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We also need to reappoint the chairperson of that board, and Carl Dowden is willing to stay on, and I think folks have a, a positive feeling about his performance as the chair. And I should note that the terms begin, we're a little late for reappointing, the terms begin for this board on October 1st, so we will be reappointing Carla as the chair as of October 1st of 2015, expiring on September 30th of 2016. So I would like to make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The next item on the agenda is board reports, and why don't we start with you, Harry, we'll go left to right, whereas the viewer right to left. Do you have something, a report to give us, Harry?
No.
No?
Well, unless they're in my.
Yeah.
Unless they're in here.
There you go, Harry. Purchasing.
Well, I may have it in here.
All right, well, go ahead and just read my copy.
Oh, all right.
All right.
Well, there were thirty-five orders, this, in the past month, fifty-seven thousand dollars, the largest being for salt for the roads from the state contract. It's almost ninety dollars a ton, very expensive process. The low bidder for the town, ADA modifications to the bathrooms and the doors, has been awarded to the Treetop Construction Firm Unlimited, that's going to be, work is going to be done very soon, scheduled for the weekend of March 4th, next weekend, weekend after next. We're working on a prebid.
We're working on a prebid for the campus parking lot. There's been a new Dell server installed. We're looking at a new tax collection system, Sue McCann is looking at that as we speak. And we're looking at various vendors who could provide a telephone communication system updated. Our telephone system is very old, might quite dial up, but it's old.
A little better than Dixie cups and string, okay. Then, Jim, do you have something to report?
I looked at my files, the only one I found is the building and zoning I had, Robert.
Okay.
And this is the monthly report from our building and zoning department for January. There were 10 permits issued, 19 inspections, 10 COCCs issued, six complaints followed up on, and a total revenue of $4,374. Of course, all the details are in the sheets here, but that's the, that's the synopsis.
Okay.
Water, Jim, or?
I didn't have the water here. All I had was my December waters. This one?
That's January.
Yeah, this is January. I had somebody that...
I'm sure we didn't read that, though, in February.
We read that at the last meeting, I think, so...
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay. I'm sure we'll get one soon from Hank.
Well, I'd be happy to read a report. The Red Hook Police Department has their report summarized for January of 2016, and I'm sure you want to know what's happening in your community. There were five personal injury accidents, five property damage accidents, there were 10 animal complaints, interestingly enough, one assist citizen. There were some civil matters. There was a harassment case. There was a hazmat incident, three lockouts. There were eight medical emergencies, a couple of order of protection, one suspicious package, two suspicious persons, traffic control, truancy, and some welfare checks. That's all I have for police. Bill, do you have a report you'd like to read?
Well, I've got a building and zoning. I can do the January 2016 report. They have 10 permits, 19 inspections, 10 certificates of occupancy issued. They dealt with six complaints, and their revenue intake in January was $4,374. And the assessor's office, there's a brief report by the deputy assessor that the assessor's office continues to process exemption forms with numerous additions to the basic star. There've also been 45 sale transfer reports to compute and file for 2016-17, over 300 enhanced star computed, and over 200 senior exemptions computed. Also processed five new additions for the solar exemption so far. And the assessor wants us to remind everybody that the last date to file any exemptions is March 1st. Any exemptions filed after that must go through the grievance board. These are all changes that must be computed for the tentative roll May 1st.
Okay. Sarah, do you have a report?
I can do animal control.
Sounds good.
Animal control, my three report for January, 10 dogs at large, three parkour dogs, one injured dog, two parkour dog houses, one dog left in a pile, one deceased dog, zero dangerous dogs, two dog bites, two cats, I'm not sure what the cats were doing.
Sarah, speak up.
Two wildlife calls and zero tickets issued.
Okay. Jim, I have, is this the water report for February? I don't know why Linda put it, is that different? That looks different to me.
Yeah, but I think we read that at an early meeting. That's a January one that Bill just showed.
The same January one?
Well, I agree if you'd like.
Well, it talks about a work session. So we, I don't think we could have, could we have? I don't know.
That's a good question, Robert.
I'm just going to finish the dog report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were... All right. Okay.
Hi, Minnie. There's an ongoing issue with dogs with electric fences. They're coming off their properties and going in the roadway, causing dangerous situations with cars or the community walking on roads. So send those to the public, please. Make sure if you have an electric fence for your dog that it's wearing the appropriate collar, that the fence is turned on. And I know Stephanie and I talked about, talked about, you know, doing a press release or some other kind of public outreach, and maybe we should do that soon, just to give people, you know, more awareness of the issue.
Be vigilant, make sure the dog's paying attention and the battery's a charge in its collar.
Yeah, right, no.
And I would say that I was there when Stephanie was talking about this to us, and one of the things that she said is that people are just letting their dogs hang out in the yard, and they need to be supervised and monitored when they're using those fences.
Yeah, then an electric fence is not an excuse to let your dog just roam and...
You know, I knew the people a number of years ago, it's a funny story. They had a great dog, very friendly dog, and they had an electric fence. And you know, before it zaps them, starts to vibrate, he used to go out in the lawn right near where it would start to vibrate, he'd lie down, and when it stopped vibrating, he knew he could escape.
They're smart.
Probably, wasn't it?
Okay, Sarah, since we're over at your end at the moment, oh no, Jim was going to read water perhaps again.
Yes, I'll go over the water again, Robert, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Well, number one, the normal is 77,000 gallons per day, and they pump 64,000 gallons per day in January. That's the total water pumped. And, you know, they're still working on that. They've, you know, the one well was rehabbed, but last time I talked to Hank, they didn't have the final results of how it was producing, they were working on the pump. The turbidity was fine, the coliform none was detected, as usual, the chlorine residuals were right within all the required limits, nitrates, everything tested fine. Filpers are working fine. The Alder Street Hydrant well isn't open, that is scheduled, the VRI was scheduled to work on that. Solar hyperchloride supply is fine. Let me see what else Hank said. Yeah, I know we've read this book. It said that the well will be put back in service in early February, so by the next report, we should have, I know exactly how that well one is doing after the rehab. And the, you know, pipes were replaced in a pump house that was a problem. And it's this month of February, which is almost done, the sink is going to be replaced there. And come spring, you know, they'll start their valve operation schedule as they do in the spring, and, you know, cut the vines on the pump house and so on. And then items on the work list for this 2016, brush hog defense area around the pump house and water tower, as usual, paint the walls inside the pump house, repair a hydrant located on Alder Street, one we just spoke of, water tank inspection, they do that on a periodic basis to see, you know, what we are, we stand as the maintenance and the right-of-way clearing, and that's it. Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, Sarah, did you want to, or Bill, did you want to read your task force report?
Well, the task force at the weekly meetings these past month continue to review the historic preservation draft of 2116, along with the proposed historic resources map, and that is, you know, is presented tonight, and that's a public hearing conducted and continuing to March 8th. During recent meetings, we've also had discussions on the uses allowed in the Ag Business District in the view toward proposing corrections or adjustments if reasonable and necessary. And also began a discussion on the creation of a committee to address energy use and management at the town level.
Okay. Sarah, I see the tree commission report is available to read.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. So the tree commission report is dated February 16th. They discussed the following items at their February 16th meeting. They confirmed their budget allowance of $1,500. They began reviewing their forest management plan for updates and revisions. They discussed plans for an Arbor Day celebration, such as a table which handouts at the town hall, maybe a tree-themed goodie basket for a raffle, possibly collaborating with the public library, and maybe a possible demonstration of tree planting here, does that sound exciting? Seedlings will be handed out as they have in other years at this Arbor Day celebration that have been ordered. They're discussing possible tree planting sites for their Arbor Day planting, four or five trees. And they discussed attending a Tree City recognition ceremony in Albany on March 30th. That's submitted by Kathy Michael, chairperson.
Terrific. Well, that's all the reports I see. Is there one that we've overlooked?
I have a zoning board report ahead of my thought here, Robert.
Yes, please, Jim.
You know, they had a special meeting this past Monday that I was unable to attend to a discussion, but the regular scheduled meeting, they had two public hearings, one was complete, and then it was voted unanimously to allow the variance. And the other one was adjourned to be continued. That's one that was discussed this past Monday, I don't have any update on that. And then there were two reviews, one review actually, and the review was for the former group home that is south on Route 9. Somebody would like to put a medical facility in there, and the building kind of fit, you probably you all familiar with that, on the right, just as you passed the Hanford Drive there, a little ways down beyond...
It's got a for-sale sign on it.
Yeah. And that was, and that was the initial review, and then the public hearing is scheduled for the March meeting.
I noticed there was some recommendation that they perhaps consider approaching us. Their intended use, the interested purchasers might not fit with the current zoning, so in the minutes is a recommendation that one of the options may be to approach us and see whether or not that particular zoning is appropriate for that location.
Right. First, I'm going to actually read the interpretation because it was a prior use didn't fit the zoning where it was grandfathered in. So if the interpretation is that this could also be grandfathered, which can be allowed if it's no more intense or less intense.
Okay.
So that was, you know, what the zoning board was going to consider.
Decide, okay.
And then, of course, if not, you know, I might think it might be a nice use, but then if that doesn't go, it would be for them to approach the town board or something.
To approach, yeah.
So I'd like to report on the zoning review committee.
Sure. Sure, please, Jim.
Zoning review committee did meet in February, unfortunately, there wasn't a quorum, but they spent a good amount of time discussing food vendor trucks in the town of Red Hook and perhaps regulating them, and also discussed the agricultural fence issue that had been presented through Ag and Open Space. So they'll be meeting again in March. Ag and Open Space met the other night, and they had the town board, we call, we refer to them, the language of the proposed resolution to define agricultural fencing, and especially with respect to allowing agricultural fencing to be, to not be required to obtain a building permit. And the language proposed had to do with allowing interior fencing to not be permitted, you know, to not require a building permit, but for boundary fences or non-interior fencing that there would be a building permit required. Well, that language specifically was presented to the Ag and Open Space, and they had a formal meeting and a formal vote, and they declined to accept that proposed language. They're, in their opinion, interior fencing as well as boundary fencing should both be allowed without a permit. So what I've said to them is that I would go back with the attorney for the town and with the ZRC and revisit, you know, the proposed language so that we can get back to the town board on what the consensus is among the Ag and Open Space and the ZRC.
Okay, or are there some recommendations, Bill, that came out of that committee and what the language should tell us, or more, they just reviewed what the current proposal was?
I haven't seen the writing from it, but Linda's here. Did they say what they would propose other than that?
They're going to discuss something on the 29th.
Okay.
They felt that what they had handed in earlier was more appropriate, so it has to be discussed again.
I look forward to seeing what they have. Look at a review, and I know it's been a longstanding issue, and it'd be nice, it'd be nice if we could come to some resolution with that. Thank you, Linda. Okay, well, does that complete board and committee reports?
I would just say, Lori Houston wasn't able to stay. She's our CAC Conservation Advisory Council Chair, but she did ask me to just explain that although there's no formal report, they have been very, very busy getting ready to launch this solarized campaign that I had mentioned earlier. And so just to say one more time, we're launching it on March 5th at Rhinebeck Town Hall. There's information on the web about the details of that event and future events, there'll be many events, and it's basically an educational opportunity for anybody in Duchess County who is interested in solar. And that's the main thing the CAC's been working on recently.
And am I right in saying the Red Hook launch is March 17?
Yeah, so, I mean, the whole campaign is launching March 5th, and then subsequent events will call community workshops.
Okay.
And we'll have one in each municipality. There'll be one in Tivoli, there'll be one in Red Hook. There'll probably end up being multiple ones over the course of the program.
Is that something we can keep on our website, updating the dates? And just to remind the folks at home, if you're interested in having solar, either on your house or on your property, this is an opportunity, you get a 10% discount on not only the installation but associated costs as well. Okay, so we're moving on to the part of the evening where we have correspondence. We have word from Central Hudson. They would like us to consider something. Their streetlights that they own and maintain, which are classified as grade A, are transitioning to LEDs. And that means that grade A fixtures that are in need of repair or replacement will automatically be replaced with LED equivalent. The LED lights are being used now, and we want to include your municipality in this program. Please respond ASAP. And it talks about the benefits, similar light, less expensive. It's better for the environment when you compare it to mercury vapor and so on and so forth. So they have what they call a blanket LED street lighting order, I'm sorry, authority order, where we list our municipality, and it says to Central Hudson Gas and Electric, you are hereby authorized to make changes specified below to the street lighting service for all street lighting districts located within the, in this case, it would be town of Red Hook, in accordance with a resolution duly adopted as provided by law by the town board of the town of Red Hook at a meeting held on in such and such a date. So that's something that I would recommend we take a look at. They have a little bit of information that I sent along with it, and perhaps something we can put on our meeting in March for discussion, for determination. Does that work with folks?
I read this correct, Robert, it's just as they failed to replace them with LED, that's why they're not going to go blanket.
Exactly right.
Unfortunately.
I would like to complete that sentence, that they'll replace with a, with a, an LED light equivalent fixture of no more than 3,000 Kelvin.
This is a, an issue that you have very strong feelings about. You want your 3,000 Kelvin or less.
Maximum.
Maximum, right, 3,000 or less.
What are the present streetlights putting out, Harry?
Well, there are a lot of them that are Kelvin and some that are 3,000, and some of them are much higher. My block, for instance, has, the one in front of my house is probably 3,000 Kelvin, but then down the block, some of them are much brighter. And they're not consistent, and I don't, I don't have an explanation for that.
Well, they have two different, they have a 39 watt and 82. There's probably some places where they want a little more light, maybe that's why they...
Yeah, but that wouldn't affect the Kelvin. The wattage, the amount of light, the amount of light and the color of the lighter are two different measures. Come down my block one day. Now, you have to pay attention. Down here is the, the streetlights between the village hall and Red Hook and the library have been replaced with these LED lights. And the ones that are on, that are on the bridge are LED lights. They're LED, but they're much lower, and they have a shield over them, so you can't, as you're driving, you don't actually see the bulb.
You see the bulbs coming at you, but not in your lane until you're right there, yeah.
Until you're right there, yeah.
Because they're angled for that.
Because they're...
Because they're, yeah.
Last, I just want to add, it's not in correspondence. It should have been in announcements. But just to let the public know that the annual financial report, as I believe I mentioned last month, is something that we're obligated to review and provide to the controller's office and also to the public. It's now finished. It's available at the town clerk's office if you would like to review that document. And special thanks to our bookkeeper and our former bookkeeper who worked tirelessly to give us this great work product.
Page is rusty before.
I, at this point, if there's no other correspondence, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the hire and fire of a particular individual.
Can we have a public comment?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Linda. Thank you very much. Yes, of course you can. Public comment. Thank you. Linda?
Yes. I was wondering if the Red Park has made any advancements on the skating rink in the hockey area?
You know, I have not heard anything about that, Linda, but I'd be happy to check into that and see if I have anything to report. I'd be happy to shoot you an email if there's anything I find out.
And the other thing, St. Margaret's Committee, has that been reconstituted in any way?
Well, we charged Harry with thinking about, Harry has specific thoughts and ideas about the makeup, and perhaps now that we're looking for future uses, who should be on that committee. So no, we don't at the moment. Harry, do we? You have a recommendation?
No, I've talked to some people, and what I'm trying to do is, is come up with a strategy to deal first with the financial implications and how we can, how we can get funding and address the development of it in a, so that it is available and has facilities appropriate for the public to use, and it will not be, and not at the expense of the taxpayer. So that's, that's a challenge. And I have spoken to some people who are very familiar with financial opportunities. So, you know, I hope we can, I can get something going there, and then we can build a committee around that.
Okay.
It looks like it's a, it'll be a major construction project for a while in the coming.
Just so I understand, so you're actually trying to solve that question and then find a committee? Because it sounds like that's a great charge for a committee.
Well, it's a little bit of both.
Right.
But instead, having a committee that's using the building will run, will be flying the face of restoring, restoring the building to complete use.
Okay. Sarah, would you like to offer help to put together some individuals?
Come up with several million dollars?
No, I don't, I don't think it's the board's job to come up with the money. I think we were just looking for.
Individuals.
Yeah, recommendations on who, you know, who we're looking for to be on that committee, what roles. And then we would potentially publish that and have people either apply or, you know, and we might invite, you know, people. But, you know, I think the idea was that we wanted to be a little bit more clear in what the charge to the committee would be going forward, you know, as far as what we're looking for from their, from their work. So, I don't know, I'm just wondering.
Would you, would you like to work with Harry on that?
It's kind of somewhat a circular situation, as I see it, at least initially, as to, in terms of trying to, trying to find the people who can, who can do that, and then, and then work up, work up a mission of the committee to, you know, around that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Linda, thank you very much for your comments. And remind me again if I forget at the end of the meeting. Okay, so going, going back to the motion, I would like to, first of all, thank you all for coming, for the folks at home. We want you to know that your thoughts and ideas are welcome. You can send them by email, give us a call, attend meetings. This is your town hall. There's a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
For the purpose of hire and fire of a particular individual. Harry seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.